Okay, well we convene now and go convene the whole. We now have a presentation on the findings of the Lake Whatcom Monitoring Project. As always, it's a pleasure to have Dr. Robin Matthews here. Go ahead, Robin.
I'm short. I'll pull this down a little bit. Okay, so 20 minutes is what I was told, which, as you know, most professors can't say their name in 20 minutes, so I'll try. What this is, is a very, very quick overview of some of the major points of the Lake Whatcom Monitoring Project. I am Robin Matthews. I'm the Director of the Institute for Watershed Studies at Western Washington University, and I have studied Lake Whatcom water quality for almost 30 years now. Just as a quick refresher, if you're not real familiar with the lake, it actually is kind of like three lakes. We have two northern basins that we label Site One or Basin One and Basin Two. They're the ones that are closest to the city. They are surrounded by a lot of urban development, and Site One is kind of the location where we've been watching a lot of trends. Site One, they're both about 2% of the volume of the lake. They're both roughly 60 feet deep, so they're relatively shallow as lakes go. The deep portion of the lake is about 96% of the lake. Statistically, that means all. We give two sites for that. The depth is over 300 feet deep. All of the major tributaries flow into this portion of the lake, and it's also the location for Sudden Valley. The objective at the Institute for Watershed Studies is to do long-term lake monitoring. It's the National Geographic approach. You just keep doing it forever. Long-term monitoring to provide a baseline that will help show you trends. We also do stream monitoring to look for trends, and we have added, because of the interest in what's happening in the lake and the phosphorus loading models, we've added quite a bit of storm event monitoring. We've monitored Silver Beach Creek. They're in three-year cycles. We did Silver Beach Creek from 2009 to 2012. We did Anderson, Austin, and Brannion Creeks from 2013 to 2015, and we've been doing the tributaries either annually or alternate years, just grab samples. We also maintain two hydrograph sites in Austin and Smith Creek, and these are sites that collect stream flow information at 15-minute intervals. We collect classic lake study-type parameters. They are designed primarily to watch for trends in the lake, so they emphasize things like nutrients. And for algae, the nutrients are mostly nitrogen and phosphorus, just like if you were gardening. And we also measure chlorophyll, because the actual measure of how productive a lake is, it's kind of like looking out in your yard. If you see a lot of green, you have a productive garden. So we measure chlorophyll as well. In the tributaries, we measure total suspended solids, and I'll talk just about a few of these. The main thing I want to do is connect the dots between why we are looking so heavily at dissolved oxygen as it relates to phosphorus, as it relates to algae, as it relates to you. And to do that, I have to do a very quick reminder of what happens in the winter in the water quality in the lake. In the winter, it's cold. Also, for the most part, the lake will be mixing from the surface to the bottom. And what we see here is temperature in blue, oxygen in red. This was February 2014, and you can see that each one of those little points is a place that we collected a sample and measured it, and it goes down. This is Site One. It only goes down 20 meters or 60 feet, but if you were to look in Basin Three, it would look very much the same. In the winter, the lake separates into a warm layer and a cold layer, and that's called stratified. Once the lake is stratified, the top and the bottom can't mix. The wind is simply not strong enough to generate the energy to mix those layers. And when that happens, if you look at the blue, you see warm water on the top, cold water on the bottom. And in sites that have a lot of algae or other kinds of organic food for bacteria, you'll see the oxygen level drop, and that's the first connection. If there's lots of algae in the lake, you see this kind of a profile where the red lines, the oxygen drops down to zero in that lower isolated portion of the lake. Now, Lake Whatcom, I said it looks like three lakes, and the water quality looks like three lakes. At the north end, you see that classic low oxygen in the bottom of the lake, the hypolimnion. At the south end, even though the lake stratifies exactly the same, there just isn't a lot of biological activity using up the oxygen. So even though the layers are separated, no new oxygen can be introduced in the bottom of the lake, the oxygen level doesn't drop, because there's just not enough activity. So the lake is called stratified when it separates into the surface and the bottom, and that stratification develops slowly. Normally, not this year, normally, it starts around May. And what you'll see is, you'll see in the oxygen at Site One, as the lake stratifies, that bottom amount of oxygen starts to drop. And if you, oops, if you look at June, you compare the top to the bottom, and you see that you've started to lose oxygen at the bottom of the lake. Lost a little bit at the top also, but that's just because the water gets warmer, and warm water doesn't hold as much oxygen. But the bottom is really dropping. When you go to July, you can see that it's dropped even more at the bottom. You also get a really cool, for me, cool little bulge right in the center, and that's a band of algae. That's called a metalimnetic oxygen maximum, and it's just caused by algae, because we're out there in the middle of the day, and the algae are photosynthesizing and pumping out lots of oxygen. By August, the bottom of Site One is usually close to zero, and by September, you can't go down from zero, so once it reaches zero, it's zero. And this particular pattern is not all that unusual, but what has been happening in Lake Whatcom and what ultimately got it listed for remediation was the fact that the rate at which the oxygen was being eaten up in Basin One, being used up, that rate was increasing, and that was what the Department of Ecology used as the primary basis. And a lot of people want to know, well, why? Because why wouldn't you look, I mean, it's listed to control phosphorus, so why are we concerned about oxygen? And the answer is that they are all related. The so whats of low oxygen, some of them are real obvious. You can't go fishing if the oxygen's zero. There's no fish out there. They don't like that. You also get really awful materials released from the sediment, including things like hydrogen sulfide. It's going to be really bad this year. We get methylated mercury that are released, and you get phosphorus. Now, phosphorus is the nutrient that controls the amount of algae in the lake, and if you have more phosphorus, you get more algae. So if you have less oxygen, you will get more phosphorus, and you will get more algae. It's called internal loading, and it's happening. We can measure the fact that the oxygen is very, very high. As soon as that, or the phosphorus is very high, as soon as we get those low oxygen levels, we start seeing phosphorus released. So that's part of our monitoring, is to watch that and see how the oxygen and phosphorus is related. But there's another major source, and this is where the TMDL is coming into play. The major internal source is released from the sediments. The major external source is from surface runoff. And so in addition to looking at the lake and doing profiles of the lake, we collect stormwater samples. We try and go out during storms. Very hard to find one. We have criteria called a qualifying event. We want to have at least one centimeter of precipitation in a 24-hour period with a distinct rise and fall in the flow in the stream. We have to collect at least seven samples, and we normally do way more than that. I think the last storm, we got 80. And we look at suspended solids and phosphorus. I mentioned we did Silver Beach Creek. We got 24 events there. We've done Austin, Anderson, and Brannion. We've got 14 events there. And City got a freebie, because one of the students who was working on Lake Whatcom decided to make her thesis about Smith Creek, and she sampled 22 storm events in Smith Creek over the course of one year. She was out there all the time. So the problem we have, this is what a typical storm event looks like. You can see it going up, and you can see it at the very end going down. It's got a kind of a funny little camel hump in the middle that makes it really hard to figure out where to collect the samples. That's one of the reasons we collect so many, because we often have hydrographs that look like this. But basically, this is the flow in Silver Beach Creek on a particular storm event, and this is what the sediment and phosphorus load looks like. And you can see that these discrete points show sediment on the top, phosphorus on the bottom. And no big surprise, basically, when you have a storm flowing down the stream, you get phosphorus transported, and you get sediment transported. You tend to get more phosphorus with the beginning of the storm than the end, and occasionally you get little things like this right here, which is probably maybe a little bank slump that occurred partway through the storm. Okay, so the low oxygen is related to phosphorus for internal loading. The storm monitoring we do is related to the phosphorus, because it brings sediment and phosphorus into the lake, and now to kind of tie it all together, the relationship between phosphorus and particularly stormwater. So one of the things that we wanted to do, I mean, it's kind of conventional knowledge that stormwater carries sediment, which carries phosphorus, which can cause, can increase the amount of phosphorus available to algae in the lakes. But we wanted to show it a little bit more clearly, and what this is, is another student's master's thesis, not part of the actual contract, but he took, during those Smith, Austin, Brannion storm events, he sampled stormwater from the same storm events, and he put it in a chamber, very cleverly designed, that has a filter in between the stormwater on one side, the stormwater basically on this side, and phosphorus-starved algae on the other side. The phosphorus-starved algae cannot pass the filter. Algae produce an enzyme that is outside the cell, and it actually causes phosphorus on the surface of a particle to float off, and then they can use it. So what the algae are doing here, and you can see it from the intense green, this is a seven-day-old culture, they have released their enzyme, which has crossed the barrier, because the enzyme can get across. The enzyme has released phosphorus from the stormwater, which is then, these are very gently shaken, which has then flowed back and fed the algae, causing them to bloom. And we've demonstrated it in pretty much all, these are all not residential. This is Austin, Brannion, and Anderson Creeks. We have with phosphorus-starved algae, single-species algae, but we've also done it with natural cultures from the lake, and you get exactly the same response. So, I didn't pay attention when I started, so I'll have to make sure. What? Okay, good. Okay, so basically, what we're seeing is internal loading and external loading. The external loading, there's phosphorus coming in anyway. There's more coming in from the residential areas than from the non-residential areas, and all of it is quite available to the algae in the lake. Basically, what we're seeing in the lake is a trend where the chlorophyll has increased from around, in the south end of the lake, around 2.5, 1 to 2.5 micrograms per liter of chlorophyll, up to now closer to 3 to 5 micrograms per liter. And so what the TMDL is designed to do is get it back to the range prior to 2000. You can see it bounces all over. That's the nature of environmental data. And again, a so what? First of all, there's this positive feedback loop. When the stormwater comes into the lake, carrying phosphorus, if algae don't rip the phosphorus off of the sediment, it will settle, or it will flow back out of the lake and be unavailable. But if the algae are able to rip off the phosphorus and put it into algal cells, it sort of plays keep-away from the sediments. It keeps it up in the active-play zone of the lake, called the photic zone. So they remove the algae, remove the phosphorus from the water and from soil particles, causing algal growth. They then decompose, and because that's already up in that active zone, the photic zone, it causes more growth, and it tends to keep the phosphorus up near the photic, the upper layer, instead of letting it move down and sediment out, sediment move into the sediments. I want to emphasize, some lakes have toxic algae blooms, certainly, but currently, that's not a problem in Lake Whatcom. It's not that it would be impossible in Lake Whatcom. The kinds of algae that can produce toxic blooms are present in the lake, but they are not in the abundant, at the levels that I would see in a lake where you find a toxic bloom. And we have checked for the toxins. They're not there. The toxins are not being produced. The main problem, in addition to aesthetic problems and habitat problems and so on, it's big increase in drinking water treatment costs, and it produces disinfection byproducts. We're seeing the same increase in the disinfection byproducts in your finished water that you see, I mean, it tracks with the increase in the algae, as you would expect, because the disinfection byproducts are caused by chlorinating things that are excreted by algae, organics. Taste and odor problems. Last year, it's a big problem with taste and odor in the spring, and then again in the fall. This year, not so much in the spring, but it can, it's usually a function of both who is there and how many of them are there. And decreased water filtration rates, which is plaguing the public works, and they're having to deal with that. The annual report summarizes the current conditions, and I've placed them into three major categories. The hypolimnetic oxygen levels at Site One are still low. Storm runoff is carrying increased concentration of sediment and phosphorus into the lake, and the chlorophyll concentrations and algal counts are still high throughout the lake. So those oxygen concentrations are very hard to treat directly. Small ponds, small lakes, you can do something about it. Big lakes, not so much. Can't do much directly, but it will solve itself if we solve the algae and the external loading. It will pull itself back. The storm runoff carries high concentrations of sediment and phosphorus. The TMDL is specifically designed to target that, to reduce phosphorus loading, which should ultimately reduce the amount of algae in the lake. And the chlorophyll and algae counts are still high. This should improve slowly. It's really important that we have realistic timeframes, because it's not something that you can turn over in five years or even 10. It's, I think you have a 50-year, is that 50-year timeline on the TMDL, something like that? But again, to address current water quality requirements, the source water pretreatment is something I think that's going to be coming up. So I wanted to leave, I wanted to go through fast enough so I could give you this year. This year, all bets are off. Remember, I've been studying the lake for almost 30 years, and we have a weather pattern that has developed that is unlike anything I have seen in 30 years of looking at Lake Whatcom. So just as a reminder, February 2014, I showed you that the lake at Site One, the oxygen and temperature was almost straight up and down. It's cold, it's well-mixed. What you see here is both the current data, so specific year are the dots, and the historic ranges, '88 to 2014, are shown in shaded polygons. 2015 looks like this. Okay, so it's not too unusual for Site One. It's going to be a warm year with early stratification, and indeed, that's exactly what happened. June, the oxygen level is already looking a little bit like, it looks like July. And we've heard this all over. Everything looks like six to eight weeks farther down the summer. So we're going to have a very bad oxygen year this year. It's going to be, they're out sampling the lake this week, and I'm pretty sure that the oxygen at Site One is going to be close to zero. But that's not the weirdest. The weirdest is at the very far end of Site Four. This is the south end of the lake, historically, the best water quality in the lake. In a typical year, it's mixed from the top to bottom, high oxygen, et cetera. This is what February looked like this year, and I've been presenting this information to the Lake Whatcom Data Management Meetings, because it's alarming. I've seen this pattern before. It actually has a name. It's called intermittent maraxis. It occurs in the little tiny arm of Lake Samish. It happens usually when there just isn't enough energy to mix the lake. So the temperature's vertical. So the water should be able to mix, but it's a little bit like adding a tint to a can of paint. You can't just add that. You have to mix, and you have to mix pretty hard to get it all mixed in. And what has probably happened here is that the lake, even though it could theoretically mix, there's nothing holding it back, it's not getting enough energy. And one of my co-investigators on this, Bob Mitchell, is currently looking into whether or not we can document that and show that the storms were lower energy. So we started the winter when it should be absolutely vertical, with an oxygen deficit at the bottom of Site Four, which is something I've never seen before. Here's what it looks like as of the first week last week. The lake is now stratified. Site Four is stratified, and so it can't get more oxygen down at the bottom. And even though it looks like it's gone, it's improved, it's actually kind of a volume. So what's happened now is the lower part of the lake, the hypolimnion, is mixing, and so that really horrible oxygen deficit is kind of being suspended throughout the entire hypolimnion, but it's still starting 1 to 2 milligrams lower than I've ever seen it start before. So that's, we'll see what happens. The good news is that it doesn't seem to be dropping any faster. I was very worried in February that I was going to start seeing a drop, so I very quickly looked at the April and June data to make sure that it didn't. And I can say that the good news is that it's not dropping. It's still relatively biologically unproductive. So this is a physical phenomenon, not a result of it suddenly getting a whole lot worse really, really fast. But it is a bad thing to start the summer with, because there will be some loss, and I just don't know whether it'll go down far enough to cause any phosphorus release from those sediments. Okay, and once again, thanks to all my colleagues, Bob Mitchell, who's working on the energy, and Dr. Jeff Matthews, who produced the, through very, very many iterations, produced the polygons to try and show what this year, last year, looked like.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Matthews? Go ahead, Jack.
So, Dr. Matthews, I have sort of a tangent issue. The County Council recently adopted stricter restrictions on fireworks throughout the entire county, and I personally have been witnessing in the lake, a lot of people firing fireworks off into the lake itself, not just on the grounds or in the trees, but actually into the lake itself. Can you comment on the toxicity or the other repercussions of having a lot of fireworks be shot off into the lake?
The volume of water is pretty big. I don't think that the toxicity would be an issue, but that's really not a nice thing to do to our water supply. I mean, quite aside from the question of toxicity, there's the morality and aesthetics of fireworks and stuff, and they do have toxic metals. I don't anticipate that after dilution, it would be a problem, but...
To me, it seems like some of the...
Things kind of strange.
Those toxic metals, the heavy metals, would be persistent for...
Oh, yeah, they will be. However, again, it's going to be mixed in. All of the metals that are in those fireworks are already in the lake in very, very, very minute quantity. So the incremental amount would be tiny in terms of health effects.
Okay, thanks. Michael.
You have, Dr. Matthews, all this longitudinal data from streams now as well. Do you have the sort of data that somebody else could take and relate to what's happening on the land side in terms of developments or permitting or implementing, you know, stormwater controls? Can we use your data, or can someone take your data and tie it to land-use data and see if what we're doing on the land side, you know, is closely correlated with what's happening in the streams?
I know that in Silver Beach Creek, that's one of the goals, and I think that's going to be an emphasis for, so Silver Beach, we did three years, right at the time that the city, and I'm not sure if the county was involved, but there was, okay, so major efforts on bank stabilization and so on. And so there's a lot of interest in going back and making those one of the streams that we monitor for this upcoming three-year cycle. And hopefully, that will show, to some degree, what's happening with what you're talking about. Now, it's a hard question to answer, because finding the effect of a very, very specific project usually requires a very specific study, but finding the effects of general, like all of the Silver Beach watershed, we're trying to stabilize, we're trying to remove sources and so on, that should be able to be something that they can look at and figure out whether it's working.
Because, of course, that's what we do, is we drive the land-use policies, and it'd be nice if we draw some kind of causal connection. And you say, project by project, you can't tell, but over the 10, 15-year span, the overall trend, I hope, would emerge.
Yeah, I'm hoping so, too. There's been a lot of work, and that's a watershed where it had a disproportionate, very disproportionately high phosphorus load going into the lake, and it would be really nice to see that go down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. See you again next year. Okay, we will now go to third, a second item has been canceled for two weeks. The third item is establishing a running list system for minor code amendments. Mr. Sepler, I'll mention that adding a conflict of interest clause to City Council rules and procedure has been postponed for two weeks. Go ahead, Rick.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I come before you to present an administrative approach to addressing minor corrections of the code. It's a system that was employed in other jurisdictions I've used successfully. Although we can establish it in terms of our department, it works best when we work with our council, and we use as a vehicle to become a placeholder to ensure that we don't lose opportunities to address minor glitches in the code. And I should say, just as a preference, major issues, issues that are urgent, should be tracked through a different manner. If something arises that we feel has either council or administration has a risk to the community, it's an interim control, it's emergency regulations, it's immediate action. If it's an issue that's more broad, typically, those issues result in work plan items, such as revision to the subdivision code or the critical error ordinance, where we see a number of changes have occurred that warrant a broader review. This track is really intended for those smaller issues that, although on a very narrow issue may have a profound effect, it is not one that is of immediate urgency, but something we wish to remedy. Often, these matters are identified by administration staff, and the public, too, for that matter, in reviewing a code or an application for another project. Someone will notice how this was phrased, see the issue, and say, you know, we really need to sort this one out. And the challenge has been, unless one is a dutiful note-taker, these fall through the cracks. We just don't have a way for the public or for others to know that we've identified them and to see how they can be resolved. So towards the end, we were proposed the establishment of a running list. A running list is essentially not a replacement of the annual amendment process. The public still has the right to suggest amendments to both the comprehensive plan as well as to the development code. Additionally, we are able to, not more than once a year, fully implement the comprehensive plan, so remedying those identified errors in zoning to provide greater clarity, to ensure that we provide timely responses warranted. Typically, the way something would get on the running list would be administration would determine it would be warranted, it's vetted internally, it's coded as to its intensity of effort. Some things are low effort, but low benefit. Some things are high benefit and low effort. We'd like to do those first. As work plans warrant during the year, we would consolidate a slate of those. We'd inform the planning committee of our intention to bring them forward, and then we would bring them forward for consideration by the planning commission, sort of in a batch. So they would be likely a series of, although related by the regulatory construct, the zoning code, for example, they might be separate sections with minor line-in, line-out fixes to address issues. We think this is a good way of memorializing changes that are needed and allowing us to use resources when available to advance them. Public, again, could assess it, and we would look at sometimes, if your running list grows too much and it's broader, it becomes a work plan item. We say, you know, we've got enough on there that we're not going to be able to fit it in between things or do it concurrently with others. We should make that an item itself and bring that forward in year and take care of all those issues concurrently. So I'd be happy to answer the process questions or the intent on this proposal.
Michael.
Rick, I think this is an excellent idea. I think the only question is, when is a particular identified issue small enough to fit on the list, or bigger or bigger? And so I've got three examples I want to throw out, and then you tell me whether or not, if they would fall on this running list. So a couple of years ago, we looked at the 24-hour residential parking rule, and we eventually changed that to a 72-hour parking rule, but it languished for a long time. Would that have been a running list item? Sandwich board signs have been an on-and-off issue for six years. They're actually illegal on the sidewalks, but they're there a lot, because people, they see it a benefit for businesses for using sandwich board signs, but they can also block the pedestrian way. I think solution to that has been approached and withdrawn two or three years. I think the solution to that has been approached and withdrawn two or three times, at least over the last few years. Would that go on the running list? And then the third example that I brought up has to do with boarding houses. Right now, there's no size limit on boarding houses. Boarding houses in many jurisdictions are legally limited to four bedrooms or 10 beds or some house-size number. Here, they're not, and there was an attempt to put 400, I think, beds together and call it a boarding house. Is that issue too big for the running list, or would that one make it to the running list?
If I could take them, and again, we're just dealing fairly broadly on them, the 24-hour would likely be a running list item. The sandwich board signs would probably not. That's a work program issue because signs themselves are fairly broad in their nature. They're fairly complex, and understanding the high intensity of the issue and the high degree of labor needed to be done, I'd say you really need to make that into work issue. I would confirm that with the planning committee, though, of council. I'd sit down and say, here's the kind of things we face when we do that, because it does look for council, as well as administration, to sort of offer up these issues either under consensus or by a majority to get onto the list itself, and it should be discussed. Lastly, on the boarding houses, I think that is a running list. I think that has good benefit, but I don't think it's extensive effort. I think it'd be resolved fairly quickly. So on my first blush of the facts, those would be the way I dispose of it.
One more question. A couple of years ago, two, maybe three years ago, Planner Moshe Quinn brought forward a couple of little correction things, and I think it was maybe two times. So there was some earlier effort to identify a bunch of smallish issues that needed fixing. I don't know how that was done. I don't know. I guess I just want to point it out to you because it happened before you were here. I don't know how it was done then. It was really nice work because it was a bunch of small fixes that needed to be doing that Mr. Quinn did.
The use of an omnibus, which has a variety of different issues to be done, is a good tool. Our challenge with individual repairs is we, as we go back to fix the code, we still have to notice, we still have to convene, we still have to hold the public hearings. It is more economical on a number of smaller items to bring them together and do it then. And you consider each item separately during the hearing, but it's much more efficient for resources. So I think what we're taking is a prior process that was done informally and making it a little more informal, but also providing both administration and council a means of getting on the list. And that's a really good tool. If a concern is raised by community members, that is appropriate for that process, we can take a look at it. It may not be urgent. You may adjudicate that it's not an urgent issue, nor is it one that's already on the work program, but would fit neatly in this niche. And this provides a way of holding on to it and then tracking it till it's resolved.
Jack.
So, Rick, you already have a list, I mean, assuming that we're going to go along with it, which I'm hoping that we do.
This is just information only, but he'll be coming back.
So you come back with the staff's proposed list as an initial discussion?
What we would do is, we would formalize internally administratively our process. We would probably start the list itself. As noted in the presentation, we would, on a biannual basis, if not sooner, meet to discuss it, but we also want to make it available to council. If council does identify in their review such an item, this is the process to get it added on.
Can I throw one on, just for, can I throw one on to your list? A few years ago, we ended up initiating a process for pipeline siting of homes and other development in proximity to pipelines. And most of that work has been done, if not all of the work has been done, but it has not come back to the council for final adoption. I believe Moshe was the one that was staffing it. Mark Gardner also did quite a bit of work on it in conjunction with the Pipeline Safety Trust. But it would be nice to see that particular project completed.
What I will do is, I will, since, if council is favorably disposed to this kind of approach, we would start internally to say what's out there that we have in process, and we would start our list by putting those on, because these are things that have been brought forward we just don't want to lose.
Kate? Thank you, Rick.
Sure.
Okay, we'll now go to our next item. It's Bellingham paid, sick, and safe leave discussion. Before I turn it over to Roxanne, because she's bringing it forward, I just want to let the community know that the ordinance in the packet was not drafted by the city at all. This was drafted by somebody else other than the city. We were getting calls last Friday, and I just want to make it perfectly clear, nobody was trying to sneak anything past anybody. It's just a draft ordinance. So now I'll turn it over to Roxanne.
And the thing that I would love to start by saying is, today is simply an introduction. I'm not going to be asking for any decision-making. I just want to introduce this to the council to give our council and the community an opportunity to have a look at these documents over time, and definitely, my goal is to get as much community input and feedback as possible, and certainly not to fast-track this in any way because I recognize the size of the initiative and what it would do. So what I'd like to do is just offer some information about why I'm interested in bringing this forward and some of the work that's been done to lead us up to this point. You know, I was really inspired by President Barack Obama when he asked our nation to please, in our cities, in our states, approve seven days of paid and safe sick leave. I've watched Seattle bring this forward with five days. I've seen Tacoma do it with three days. But I believe in our president, and my dream is that we could hopefully get seven days in Bellingham. I feel like this is such a great measure that we could do to really protect our public health and well-being, and it's something that we really need to do, especially in terms of the fact that we could create a more level playing field for, in the difference of those that do and don't get sick days and the stress that people have when they are told that they have to come to work even if they're sick, or let alone if they have to leave their child at home who is sick and they don't have the opportunity to care for that child. And I feel better about the timing of bringing this forward because it's had a chance to really take foot and work well in the cities that it's passed in. And independent studies have found that more businesses, 70% of Seattle businesses, were in support of sick leave in terms of what it does from around, for reducing turnover and increasing productivity. At the same time, I think we have an opportunity to help shape what the state legislature will do. You think of all those different numbers of what the cities have passed, and I hope they would be in the higher range rather than the three days of sick leave. So I hope our city could be a vocal voice in setting a positive approach for that. And then also, this ordinance includes paid leave for anybody who is seeking protection orders, and I think that's something that we really need to protect in our community. And also, I'll just say that a broad-based coalition has formed in support of this. It includes leaders from Central Labor Council, Washington Work and Families, Teamsters Local 231, the Watcom Skagit branch of Industrial Workers of the World, Occupy Bellingham, Jobs with Justice, SEIU 1199, UFCW 21, and the Watcom Peace and Justice Center. Now, listing all those titles, I realize there's something else we need to do, and we need to hear many voices in this process. And that's what I'm committed to doing, is hearing as many voices as possible. At the same time, so many community members have come to me in hearing about this and shared really heartbreaking stories of things that they've had to experience. And so I ask even our toughest adversaries of this to please just keep an open mind and an open heart as we go through this. My last rationale for bringing this forward is that if we really want to get different kinds of people involved in our government, I fundamentally believe that we have to create policies that will uniquely affect them and give them a reason to show up and hear, so we can hear from them. So again, I'm not asking for a decision today. I'm not asking for any major movement. I'm just hoping that the council might be willing to set a future committee of the whole work session to get, you know, more feedback about the ordinance and gather any thoughts. Thank you.
Dan.
So I really appreciate that you're bringing this forward, and I do support this philosophically. I do have some questions. I was approached by a small business owner in my ward who's a bit of a success story. That's Ocean Soaps Amory Fiala, I believe is her pronunciation of her last name. You know, went from a very small company to, you know, an employer of, not a huge employer, but an employer of size. And she had some concerns that I'm interested in addressing, and that is, how would we do outreach to small businesses? We talk about hearing voices. I absolutely agree with that. I would like to see how we bring in all members of the community, including those small businesses. As a small business owner myself, I would have that concern. I was also looking for the threshold for small businesses in terms of either number of employees or revenue per year in here, and maybe I just, I might have overlooked that, but I would want to know what that would look like. And then also, just, there was a provision for enforcement, and I would just want to have a lot of clarity around that so it doesn't become a burden for administration on either the city side or the small businesses side. So I just want to bring those topics up. Terry.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we do decide to move this forward, at least for further exploration, I think it would need to have that particularly outreach to, because I've gotten the same thing from small business people, questions about how that works and things. That, mentioned here about going to a committee of the whole, I would kind of prefer it to go to something like the Community and Economic Development Committee to work through those issues, and to do the outreach much simp, you know, because this is kind of like as big as landlord licensing kind of issues and not something that we should rush through. And planning did a really good job of being able to, on a smaller committee, to be able to work through a lot of the issues before it came to the committee of the whole. So if we decide, you know, to explore it further, I would prefer that it goes to committee so committee can do the in-depth work that it would probably need to do.
Sounds like a good idea, huh, Michael? Roxanne.
Well, I just wanted to make it clear, the draft ordinance that you're seeing in your council packet was created by that healthy Bellingham coalition. Again, to reinforce, it was nothing that city staff worked on, and that is really intended to be a draft. It was intended to create a framework so council and the community can discuss and create voice for the differences that they want to see in that.
Okay, Michael.
Well, that'll be the committee I'm currently chairing, but I think the important thing is that Roxanne sits on that committee, so if that's the will of the rest of the council, we'll move it to that committee.
I don't see any problem with that. Okay. Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's a good committee for it to go to, to be discussed. And one of the things I really appreciate is when the council comes up with policy direction for the administration, and our staff members write the ordinances. I understand there's something now to work off of. Many times, though, we're looking at something that's, where the words, sometimes the words create a barrier to the conversation because they're already out there. So I guess that's what I'd say is, if we have staff that are the ones that are going to have to explain it to you and to all the public, that maybe we have that staff actually come up with the language to present to you if, in fact, this is something that you go forward with. So that's my request.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. County jail proposal update. Mayor Linville.
I'm not there yet.
No, you're Mayor Linville right now. See how the afternoon goes.
I've already just been out in Linden this morning, so you've got to be real nice to me. I'm going to introduce the topic. Brian and Peter have some information, factual information they'd like to present to you, and then I'd like to go through an analysis of the options that we have as a city and how we would move forward. So first of all, I want to make it very clear that this new jail, I believe we need, I am not in dispute about the location of it because it's in a location where we can expand if, in fact, in 30 years or 20 years or 25 years, we see that we need more beds. My hope is that we don't see that because if we invest in the diversion and prevention that I firmly believe is a necessary change in how we deal with criminal justice now, that potentially, the size of the jail that we build is the size of the jail that we have, and that we'll have alternatives for people who we think are better served outside the jail boundaries. So having said that, I guess I'm still looking for the commitment to the diversion and prevention and how we're going to implement and pay for those things that we believe and that we are investing in now. But the truth is, the county has to house all the felons in the county, and those people that should be in the jail, I believe, should not be in the jail that we have now. That jail is not efficient, and it's not safe, and it doesn't allow the services that people need for rehabilitation within that facility. So I think those need to be, we need to be aware that those are needs we have. But we're basically faced with kind of an either-or choice right now, and as we've gone through the alternatives, we've gone from a completely different way of funding a jail, using property tax, to understanding that the county council's taken the position to use the 2/10 of a percent. We've talked about, and when I say we, it's been the administrations, have talked about the ability to change the agreement with Bellingham. Potentially, Bellingham would have a different agreement about how the money gets spent, at least a 10th of a percent. That we would at least have an agreement that the alternatives that come out of the jail task force, and I know it's not called the jail task force, the one that the county council put in place, would actually be implemented and funded. And what we're left with, basically, is the proposal as it exists, when the county council, there's some minor changes, the county council approved it to go on the ballot, and so the only thing that's left to determine is, will Bellingham be a part of that agreement or not? And so we're going to go through some information about it, and then we'll have a discussion, hopefully, about the pros and cons of being a part of this agreement or not.
So Peter Raffato, city attorney. Brian and I, I think, will follow basically the outline of the memo that is in the packet, page 118. And for my part, I was just going to talk about sort of a recap over the last couple of months and status of where we are. I think, Brian, we'll talk a little bit about fiscal implications, program implications. Mayor Kelly already addressed some of the things that I would say. And just to recap, the city council requested that the administration renew discussions with county government based on core principles. I'm sure you all remember that. The administration sent a specific proposal consistent with those core principles to the county. And in a county council meeting subsequent to that, they voted, as you know, to place a measure on the ballot, and the specific ballot language that was voted on by the county council is on page 118. It's under the heading of jail facilities sales and use tax. It's the 2/10 of a percent that we've been talking about. I will note that there is the last line. It talks about half of this tax would expire upon repayment of bonds issued to finance the jail facilities. And then, at the same time, the county council voted really out of three options, and I'll paraphrase, but the first option was to take what has really been proposed, the financial model, not make any significant changes, rework it in light of the fact that all the cities might not sign on, and send that back to the city. The second proposal, as articulated in the memo to council, was to accept the city's proposal. I don't believe, my understanding wasn't the city's proposal, wasn't to take it or leave it, but that option said, take the city's proposal and figure out the funding for that. And the third option was to do nothing, and the county council, in addition to voting to put the measure on the ballot, voted option number one. So with that came, a plan is articulated in the whereas clauses that if the ballot passes, the size of the jail, the jail will be sized according to those cities that are participating in the interlocal agreement. And it talked about, there is a slightly revised interlocal agreement that has been sent to the city. I don't know if it's quite ready. I don't know exactly what the status of that is. My understanding is that the county is asking the city, the city of Bellingham, to vote again on that agreement. The deadline in the whereas clauses of that agreement sets August 14th as the deadline for cities to make a decision as to whether they will sign the agreement. The revised agreement has no changes to the funding mechanism or the distribution of costs and revenues. More specific... More specifically, no funding is provided or set aside for prevention and diversion. And more specifically, the revised agreement sent to the city, just to put it in the context of the discussions that this council has had, you remember we had five concerns, plus 17 specific concerns sent to the county? I would say one of the 17 concerns was changed, just to be accurate. There was a question about definition of inmate and that was changed in the version that was sent to the city. There hasn't been any movement on substantive elements from my read of the, the agreement proposed by the city, which were based on those core principles that we discussed at the cities, city council meeting previous. And that's really all I have as far as the status and a recap of where we've been. And I, the agreement wasn't included in the packet. I don't know if it's quite ripe for that. I don't know exactly what the status of that is.
We have a copy of the.
We have a, we have a copy of it.
Of the amended agreement.
And essentially, it has been revised to allow, again, to implement that plan that if the ballot measure passes, the jail will be a size, sized in accordance with whatever cities sign on to the agreement.
Go ahead, Brian.
Brian Hinshaw, Finance Department. As Peter said, it, it's more or less as you've been presented the information in the past on page 119 in the agenda bill. We did try to summarize just some bullet points of the numbers. But again, the prevention and diversion approach is, remains unfunded. There's no comprehensive look at how or what those programs would consist of and then how they would be funded. Then, as Peter said, the specific program, the fiscal impact of, I guess we'll call it option number one, the first one there. Basically, if the city agreed and signed the proposal from the county, both for the per diem rates and the capital funding of the, of the jail, there would be a capital contribution cost of about $1.2 million annually, beginning in 2019. Between now and, and 2019, basically, the county would keep 90% of all the sales tax revenue. Estimated operating costs in 2019 are $100 per day. That's up from $80 per day currently. That's a 20% increase in three years from now. And that would be about $2 million that the city would be paying if you took the use that we are doing now of $1.6 million. The projected revenue to the city in 2019 is about $600,000. That would grow over the 30-year period to 2048 to about $3 million. At the same time, our jail bed costs are going up at 5% a year, so they would grow at, to about $8 million during that same time period. So our daybed costs are always going to exceed any of the revenue that could come from the sales tax. If the county goes forward without the agreement signed by the city, the RCWs would split it the two-tenths of a percent, we would get or receive about $2 million next year or the very first year that it went forward and was voted and approved. That money would then be available for us to spend, not only on our jail population, but any diversionary project, our programs or diversionary projects or programs, sorry, that we would like to fund. Some of those are ongoing already that we are funding out of the general fund. Others would be part of the task force or other ones that we've identified that haven't been funded. We have talked to other jurisdictions that provide incarceration. And the only correction in the second bullet point there is that it's $65 including transportation per day, so quite a bit less expensive than even the current daybed cost, and that is available. I confirmed that this morning.
Brian, plus transportation costs, so that could be 100.
No, it's with, that includes transportation costs. That's what I'm saying. Correction on the, in the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I was on the phone this morning and confirmed that the $65 per day includes transportation.
Okay.
A number of other jurisdictions use that. It's in eastern Washington, but they, they do provide service back and forth to that. So we're here to answer questions.
What about number three?
Well, number three is, is another one, let's see, specific fiscal impact of Bellingham if ballot measure does not pass and Waukesha County does not accept. So regardless of the fact, if the county continues forward and puts this on the ballot, there's some question on if the votes are there, whether Bellingham participates or doesn't participate. And option three would just be that currently, our, our agreement with the county expires December 31st. We would need to find probably some interim place for our inmates, and that's what number three is outlining there. And again, it would be the same diversionary projects, programs, and also a facility probably in eastern Washington that we would have to sign a contract with.
Terry?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a lot to say. One, I'm really disappointed that the county wasn't willing to continue talking because I really feel from talking with the county council people that I talked to, that we could have maybe gotten to a place where we could get agreement as opposed to only being able to get out of the two largest governments and the best you can do is get five votes out of 14. Five out of 14. That says to me, you've got a snowball's chance in hell of passing a countywide jail thing. It doesn't even make sense that we shouldn't be continuing talking. And I think that's what we need to do as we go forward. Continue talking with the county so when this goes down in flames, we can be ready to have a ballot measure that will pass. I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I was incredulous when I was over, you know, I did get a chance when I was over in, in Wenatchee to talk to the mayor of Burlington. And they were in a very similar situation when the Skagit jail was because, like Bellingham, they, they generate a whole lot more sales tax than the other parts of the county. So they were going to, having to pay a bigger percentage towards the jail than what their use would be. Luckily, Skagit at least, at least, was willing to sit and talk about it and they got a little bit better deal. They're still really not happy with what happened and what is happening, but at least they were able to have some negotiations. And they kind of said, hey, hold your ground because, you know, it sounds like the same playbook. They waited till the last minute, just like they did with us after they rounded up some of the other ones and come and say, sign this or else. They had the same threats of, if you don't sign this, you're not going to be able to use the jail, or it'll be three times the cost for them. I mean, boy, where did we hear this before? You know, so I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared, I'm not prepared to vote to sign on to this because it's not, it's not a good agreement. I thought the Herald article today was really interesting because I got more answers about what happens to that, that 1% that we passed to build a jail. Granted, under that measure, it's legal to use your operating cost to operate a jail. But more appropriate is to use your general funds to pay for the operation of the jail and put that money aside to build a jail. But they didn't want to pass a property tax to fund the operations as when we fund our police force, we have to use general funds. You know, that's the way it should have been, but that's not what was done. So all that money was used, the biggest percentage for operation costs. It should have went for having there to build this part of the jail. We couldn't get a lot of those answers, but the Herald, I think, did a better job of this than what we were able to get. So, you know, I, I know, you know, it would be a real drag, but I don't think it's going to pass, so I think we need to continue working and we need to continue talking. I'm going to continue talking with the county council because they got a bare, a bare majority to pass that and with reservations of, to get the majority of working on some ideas that will pass because I totally, total agreement with you, Mayor, that we need a new jail. We need it, but not at any cost. It's got to be a cost that makes sense to the citizens of Bellingham as well so that we're not paying double on some of these items and other things. So that's what I've got to say.
Yes.
Can I just fill everybody in on my conversation in London this morning?
Turn your mic on.
I don't want you to hear me.
That's fine.
We were part of a discussion with the small cities this morning. And I just want to clarify a couple of things that I heard. First of all, I believe that the position that the cat, the city's taken in wanting to have alternatives is in the best interest of our whole county. It's not just in the best interest of Bellingham. And obviously, we're putting general fund now into all our alternatives and we will continue to do that. Plus, we'll put general fund into our bed costs. We will be getting money back from the, the sales tax to the city, but it's not going to be enough for either all jail costs or alternatives that we're, that we would like to provide. So it is true that we're going to get, I think I heard, $800,000 back. It says here 600,000, but between eight, six and $800,000. There were a couple of suggestions that were thrown out in Linden this morning. And one of them was that putting an extra $3 to $5 bed charge on, on each bed, or charge on each bed use to put into a, a pot to be able to implement alternatives. So that was something that one of the mayors had suggested, and it's not a bad idea. I mean, it's a good idea to get to do that. We don't really have a complete estimate on how much it will cost us to continue to do what we're starting to do now, what, what it would actually cost us in the long run. We know it's going to cost more as more people interact or begin to interact with the criminal justice system. So that was one. The second is, I, I just want to say that the, I believe that, that for the city council, this isn't about money because that money would be committed to being spent on the alternatives that we're talking about. This is not money going into our general fund. This is not money, you know, that we're saying we would like to spend on some other, something else, like a park or a whatever. This is money that we would like committed to making our criminal justice system work better. I am personally concerned, and I express this to the mayors in Linden, I am personally concerned about what will happen if there isn't a new jail. And that's entirely due to the employees that work in the current jail now. It is not a safe environment. And it's also about getting people to break the cycle and being able to have that health and medical, mental health treatment that they're not being able to get to the full extent now that they would get in a new facility. I have, you know, kept out hope that there would be some way to at least make the commitment that some of this money will go to those alternatives. Because the capital and the operating of the two-tenths of a percent are basically together, it's very difficult to unravel that when you don't have, like, two separate pots of money, one for the capital construction, one for the operating, that then we could make sure meets the needs. The, it's very expensive to run a jail. And I made the commitment also that I do not think that Bellingham should be in the jail business. So if, in fact, we're either not a part of this or the measure goes down at the, at the polls, I don't see us building our own jail. I would rather put money into the alternatives that we've been talking about. So this is a really hard decision. I don't think it's easy. I wish I, it, it sounds easier when Terry says it, but I, I actually believe that it's a difficult decision because I also think that without the support of the city, it will be harder to pass a measure. And if a measure fails without any different proposal on alternatives, then what happens is the, the, the inmates and the employees and the community all, all suffer if we don't get a proposal that passes. So I am in no way feeling happy about the fact that this might not pass because we need, we need it. So with that, I, I think there was a strong feeling at the, at the meeting this morning that time had run out and that this was the proposal that it was going to be. We actually had one suggestion that we put the money in to be able to, we, we pass the, the levy that the county wants to pass, we, we set aside the money that it would take for us to build a correctional facility in Ferndale, and then we negotiate about what the operating, operation is going to be and what the alternatives were going to be because the jail will not be open until 2019. So it isn't that the jail will be open tomorrow and we have to figure that out. And I do think that that would have been a viable alternative, but it was definitely only really supported by me. So I, I want to make that clear. I think that, I don't know, Terry, what your discussions will be with the county council, but I, I think that they, whether by a slim margin or not, four of them voted to put this on the ballot. And I think that building a safe jail now, I don't think that that's a given, that that's not going to go through because people know that we need it. So anyway, so that's just my, my input.
Peter, you're saying you're going over a proposal that was sent over. Will that be put on our agenda next meeting?
I mean, that's, that's up to council.
Well, can you tell us?
You want to know what?
You haven't said anything about it, so.
Basically, it's, there's, there's two changes from what you saw before. One is, from, from memory, and, and we can put it in the packet, or I can send it out. I have a copy, but I've gone through it a couple of times. It changes the model such that the prior agreement assumed that all the cities would sign on to the agreement. This one is basically, the jail will be up to 521 beds, but that size will be dependent on who signs the agreement by August 14th. So that's, that's one change. The second change is there was something that we had raised a concern about, the definition of inmate and the determination of case status, who's responsible, city or the county. That was clarified in the agreement so that it's the same as what it's been and consistent with state law. From memory, that's, those are the, those are the, really the only two changes that I can think of. There was no real substantive changes.
Michael?
Well, it, it sounds like the revised interlocal is really not an improvement on, on the things I think that we were worried about. I share everyone's concern with the old jail. And what's frustrating for me is the one thing I thought that used to be clear in everyone's mind is we're building one jail for everyone, we're all going to share in paying for the costs. And I don't like the way this is working out where unless we sign on to the deal, which we said we, was problematic for us, we're cut out. There's not one jail for everyone paid for proportionally by all the users. That was the one thing that was clear and that's the one thing that's being taken away. And that just doesn't seem like a really kind of healthy prospect. It wasn't like Bellingham said, hey, we'll go our own way. No, Bellingham never wanted to go his own way. I agree with the mayor, we shouldn't be running a jail. We've got a local government partner who already runs a jail. They should keep running the jail, the new jail, the new jail we helped pay for, the new jail we participate in. That's always been the plan. And it's, it's really disconcerting that somehow that might not be the plan. So I think I agree, maybe, Terry, you were saying this way or not, but, you know, I think the ballot measure will fail and we'll all be losers when that happens. And I think we need a Plan B already in place. I think we need to start discussing about what a better alternative would be, one that reaches some hard compromises on all sides, not just on our side. What we had before, I think, was an okay jail proposal and a troublesome funding plan. Now we have a troublesome jail plan and the same funding problem. So it's a step backward. I, I just think it's really clear that I believe every one of us here believes we should pay our fair share. And that's really all we were talking about. And then the other issue I think there's been more reception on is, you know, we also need to reduce the overall costs for criminal justice in our community with prevention, with treatment, with diversion. I think there's more agreement on that. I think there's now a pretty broad consensus, actually in both sides, you know, of the street here, that there needs to be more done on that. But we haven't been able, I think, to make as much progress on what that looks like because we've stumbled over the jail itself.
I, um, one of the things I think we should refrain from saying is, it's not going to pass. That's up to the voters, and that's been my argument from day one. Let the voters decide on this. To make blanket statements, well, it's not going to pass, that's, 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 that's not good. That really isn't good. Because we're probably going to have a ballot measure on the ballot whether we like it or not. And I'm going to vote for it because we need it because we need a new jail. I, you know, everything that comes across our desk, like I've said before, is we've never, ever passed a perfect agreement, whether it be with the county or whether it be with anybody we deal with. We don't get a perfect agreement. Sometimes it's 50/50, sometimes it's 50, or 40/60, 30/70, 10/90, whatever. But I just think we should not spend our time on this side of the street making predictions on how the citizens of Waukam County, and especially the citizens of Bellingham. You know, I've been up here for 22 years, but I have never taken their vote for granted, the citizens I work for, and I've never told them how to vote on a certain ballot measure that somebody put forward, whether it be us or the county. So I don't think we should spend much time talking about that. But what does concern me, if it does go on the ballot and it does pass, I mean, you say it only costs $65 a day if we transfer them out. Well, people are complaining about having a jail la bounté. How are our court costs going to be if we have somebody in jail in Yakima or Spokane or Wenatchee or something like that? I think this has a chance of costing us more money if we have to go out on our own, and I hope to God that doesn't happen. You know, we've had jail problems before. I remember when Mayor Douglas and Shirley Van Zantin had a dispute. We were millions of dollars apart. Mark and Pete got elected. They worked that out. I, you know, it's just, it's been an ongoing battle, and it's a crying shame that this is going to be a political issue because this is one issue that shouldn't be political, but it's going to be brought up that way. Mayor Kelly?
I'd just like to correct one thing because ma, Executive Louse has been very clear that this, that, that the ability to put people in the existing jail or the new jail does exist as long as the capacity's there. So it's not a, a foregone conclusion that nobody can go to the jail. I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about the, the facts.
Okay. Terry?
Yep. You spoke about a critical difference between what we have now and what we had before, is the crucial difference was Shirley Van Zant and Mayor Douglas were able to talk and work out--
No, no, they didn't work out nothing. It was Mark and Pete that worked it out in 95.
Okay.
Shirley and, and Doug quit talking.
Okay, but they got, they continued working, not just saying, we're not going to discuss this any longer. We're going to put it on the ballot. We're not going to talk with you about this. That's the difference, because I think we could have gotten there. But the door was slammed shut, and we were not allowed to have our questions answered or to see if we could reach that. And that, that's the part, that is the part that really troubles me because we could have, I think, but--
Well--
That was not what was, you know, the door was shut. And, and so now we have take it or leave it, and mine is, is--
I, I--
Is leave it.
I agree with you.
You're right. The voters will do what the voters will do.
No, no, but, but I, but I agree with you, but it wasn't closed shut by Executive Louse or by Mayor Linville. Four members of the county council voted to put it on the ballot.
I'm just saying, that's, that's what it was--
I mean, we continue to get these votes from them, and they're saying, well, they really want to do this. They know we don't like it. When they go ahead and pass it anyway, what the hell is that?
Mm, yeah.
We don't do things like that. If they want to put four votes to send it to the ballot, then by God, do it. And then don't come out and say, well, I know city council members don't like that, but we're going to do it anyway. I mean, that just adds to the problem. And I, I do feel sorry for people having to decide on this because it's, it's getting to be a mess. Jack?
I just had a simple question. I'm trying to do the math here about the operating cost of $100 per, per bed day at $2 million annually. Does that mean we have approximately 55 misdemeanor inmates from, participating from Bellingham's part of it into the system?
Well, we're, we're researching the number on a day. So, but we know what we paid in total in dollars. So it's easier to talk about dollars than actual people because the billing is fractional, and we're working on that. So--
Fractional meaning that a part day represents a part--
Four quarters of every day is what it's billed at. And so we're working on getting total numbers for alternatives to know what we would actually need. But we paid $1,006,000 last year in daybeds, so 20% more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's, go ahead, Michael, then we're going to wrap it up. I don't think there's going to be any new, new--
Yeah, this just really has to do with the operations cost issue. I mean, we, we saw that, as Terry pointed out in the article today, that the, the current one-tenth, a lot of that's being used for operations. The mental health tax, there's, certain jail programs are paid for out of mental health tax. They're appropriate programs, but it's kind of an operational expense. I, I think, I don't, it's awkward looking over someone else's shoulder for a jail I don't run, never had to look at before, but it seems that there's a real operational cost problem over the jail, and we're now having to kind of buy into it. The fact that there will be a 20% increase by the time the jail opens, and I thought I heard an estimate of 5% per year annual inflation on the daily rate over the next few years, I don't even, I don't even know how, how anyone's funding proposal works with that kind of inflation. I, I guess that's one of the reasons why I, I agree with Kelly, separating the operations and the capital is really important, because I think there's something really important going on in operations that I don't fully understand, and I think it's worrisome.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I heard one question about the, the actual jail costs if we transported--
Yes.
--inmates. Are there any other questions that the council might like us to ask? If you can't think of them now, we'll be obviously talking about this again at our next meeting. So we're happy to bring back any other information that you have that--
Okay, if you don't have any now, send them--
Send them to Brian, to Brian Heinrich, please.
I just had one quick one. If we are to look at, to ferment, if we had to build a triage center to help, and whether we could increase the one we have or build one for new, maybe what the cost of that would be and throw that into the conversation?
I really love it if the triage center would be available, but what I learned this morning is that part of the 2004, '05, '06 proposal was that the triage center would be sold and potentially not be available to use as a triage center anymore, and that those employees that are in the triage center would be going to help staff the new jail. So that doesn't mean that there isn't something that might be possible with the building, but that, that was the, I think that's the assumption that the county's working under, that it would, would have to be a new facility.
Jack?
I guess I just had one question. It, this had to do with the article that was in the Herald. Well done, by the way. One of the things that was in there was that we would be combining the two facilities under this particular proposal, but we'd also be increasing the, the overall number of sheriffs that would have to be staffing that. To me, it seems like if you're, you know, you're combining facilities, that you'd have some sort of staffing savings. Could you clarify with the county as to the reasons why the staffing would be increased?
And I think it was two to three staff, because I don't know if they think that there's an adequate number of staff now. I, I don't question that there might, if you're doing better service, you might need more people to do it, but it wouldn't be--
Let's get into the question that Michael was talking about, the inflationary rate. It would be nice for us as policymakers to be able to understand what some of the, some of those details would be.
Okay, we can find that out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Now we will go to approval of afternoon minutes for June 8th.
Move approval?
No, we're going to do those next. I'm sorry. June 15th, committee meeting.
Move approval of the committee meeting minutes from June 15th?
Second.
Most have been made second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, most who carry 7-0. Now the retreat minutes for June 8th.
Move approval?
Second.
Most have been made seconded. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, most who carry 7-0. Any other older new business before we go to executive session? Okay. Where's my script here? Okay, we now go to executive session. There are two items. The first is litigation City of Bellingham versus TEE, approximately 15 minutes. Potential property acquisition, approximately five minutes. I'll be back here at 3:20.